Called this Village of Green Hills Council meeting, January 26, 2021, to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Halter?
Here.
Ms. Hermes?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Metz?
Here.
Ms. Osmanaglu?
Here.
Ms. Walter?
Here.
And Mayor Moore?
Here.
Okay, we have prayer by Maria Walter.
God, please guide us in this new year to grow closer together in our families, in our units, in our town, in our world, and let us always strive to bring peace to the world, and let us leave each one of the days to the fullest. For all the blessings of the year, we give you thanks, God, and protect us from the COVID-19. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we have the minutes of previous council meetings of 12:08, 20:00, and work session of 1:12, 21:00. Any corrections?
I found one.
Hearing, you found one?
None.
Oh, okay, hearing none, the minutes are approved. All right, this is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to three minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers. Anybody? Just here to watch. Okay. All right, well, we'll try to make it entertaining. All right, reports of village officials. Oh, did you want to?
I was going to give my report.
Okay, all right. Municipal manager, Yvonne Kovak?
Thank you, Mayor, and I did actually receive comments from a couple of citizens this evening who, with us being purple, thought we would take written comments. So I will read through those quickly if I may. The first is from Monique Masontholler, 154 Junefield. I was glad to hear council members discussion about Duke Energy smart meters and opt-out fees at the December 8 meeting. I appreciate that Jeff Halter voiced his opposition to the opt-out fees. I emailed to thank him and asked that he contact our state rep, Jessica Miranda, and asked her to introduce legislation to eliminate the fees. In January 2020, Green Hills residents sent information to Jessica's office and requested that she take action to eliminate opt-out fees. We included letters from residents who are opposed to the fees and smart meters themselves. Some Green Hills residents who wrote letters want to opt out but can't afford the fees. When we followed up with Jessica's office, her legislative aide said that we have provided enough information for her to lead the charge against the fees. When we met with Jessica the following month, she was going to focus instead on helping her constituents fight Duke Energy's proposed natural gas pipeline. Even so, she was interested in the learning more about California smart meter lawsuits filed because of fires, radiation emissions, and customers experience health issues after installation. I emailed reference links to her office but did not hear back. Since our meeting last year, I have continued emailing her updated information and also requested again that she take action to eliminate the fees. Other American legislators have introduced legislation already. I have received no response. Green Hills residents opposed to smart meters and opt-out fees have filed complaints with PUCO. In 2018, local TV reporter John Matheries reported there had been Duke smart meter fires. Other utility, Ohio utility companies don't charge customers as much as Duke for opting out of smart meters. In Indiana, Duke Energy customers who call in their meter readings don't have to pay monthly fees. I am asking that all council members contact Ms. Miranda's office on behalf of village residents and request that she introduce legislation to eliminate opt-out fees. A few sentences would be enough, and she does provide the email and phone number if anyone needs it. The second correspondence came from Venezuela, 92 Julep. There continues with an unreasonable outcome in southwest Ohio from Duke Energy charging customers a much higher opt-out fee on smart meter home installations compared to other Duke customers in some nearby states, including Kentucky and Indiana. Thanks to Jeff Halter for his recent efforts to connect with Ohio House District 28 Representative Jessica Miranda, total fixed costs on a monthly bill with the added $30 opt-out fee puts the actual fixed cost as a percentage of the total bill to near 70%. This is especially true during the non-heating months of the year, which cover May through September. For those same opt-out customers with electric usage at or below the average or efficient levels as defined in each monthly Duke Home Energy report, the percentage of total bill to fixed cost is even higher. These percentages are easily derived from a typical monthly bill using the current fixed delivery rates and rider fees for both gas and electric, together with the fixed user distribution charges. Consumers who invest in efficiency and renewable energy can save money on energy costs, but their savings are reduced with higher fixed fees. The monthly fixed costs, including the smart meter opt-out fee, significantly reduce that savings for those in the village utility aggregation program. I urge all council members to push for legislation before needed in order to change PUCO policy decisions affecting high-energy fixed costs as well as eliminating the punitive opt-out fee. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, then I will move on to some items that I have. There's a few things on your agenda tonight that I wanted to talk about. I did want to point out that the 2021 fee schedule, we are not proposing any changes. I think we last passed, council last updated our fee schedule in maybe September of last year. It stays the same. You're simply adopting it for this year's fee schedule. The one regarding increase for salaries, salaried increases for salaried employees, if I can say that. Okay, we, that would be Deb, chief, and I, and we are not covered, as you probably know, by the step schedule that was passed previously by council. Each year, you've been passing legislation to give us our increases. This one's worded to give us our increases and allow those in the future unless either our economic health would prevent the village from wanting to do that or for any other reason the council would desire to take other actions. The supplemental appropriation, this supplemental accomplishes two things, and Deb, feel free to jump in if you want. First, it appropriates the remaining balances. There's a few accounts listed there, and appropriating the balances of those will allow the expenditure of those funds with the intent of eventually closing those accounts. And the second thing it does is allow for the transfer of funds that council has already appropriated in this year's budget. I guess if there's more questions on those, we can do it at the time of legislation. Okay. Next thing I'm really excited to report is that we're gonna have a new code enforcement officer with us starting tomorrow. I'm entering into a contract with, his name is Mark Worley. He has a law enforcement background, and I think this will be a real plus for our code enforcement efforts, having somebody close and with us every day. Not, he's not full-time, but he's flexible on when he wants to work, but I just think there's a lot to be gained by this, by having him here. So I'll keep you posted on that. We're looking forward to it.
What's his name again?
Mark Worley. Just a reminder again, on March 1, the new rate starts for the waste and recycling. It's going up 75 cents a month per household, but that rate is good for five years. So pleased that we're able to hold that steady for a while. Upcoming swim season is kind of great to be talking about that already. So we are already getting memberships in for this year. It looks like we will start, we will start as scheduled on Memorial Day weekend. We do anticipate having the COVID restrictions in place. Swim Safe is a little hopeful that maybe as the summer goes on, there's a lesson will lighten up a little bit, but we don't know. So we're prepared to go the whole season with them in place if we have to. They did an excellent job, and something we can all look forward to.
Are the membership forms online?
Yes, everything's online.
Okay.
Yes. We'll have it added in this next journal. And again, we had done the mailing for those who had joined last year, and I, last time I checked with Brenda, we're getting a good number of those back. So that's great. Let's see, what else do I have here? I think that's about it for now.
Comments or questions? All right, law director, Jeff Forbes?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing of any real significance to report. 134th General Assembly just convened earlier this month, and they haven't really introduced any legislation of major significance for municipal interest yet at this point, but we'll continue to monitor that.
Okay, thank you. All right, clerk of council, Tanya Kohler?
No report.
Chief of police, Neil Fardeman?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The saddest news is, you'll observe, all of our officers have a morning ribbon that's in recognition of Toledo Officer Brandon Stalker, who was unfortunately murdered in the line of duty on January 19, and we're sad to see the new year start out that way. We're also sad to lose two of our officers, not to gunfire, but just to other positions. So that's happy for them. They are both moving on to other law enforcement positions. We just learned recently that Officer Cody Ritchie will be a police officer in Eaton, Ohio. He's very interested in being a K-9 officer, so that is what has spurned his move. I'm very pleased to report that of the applications that we had, we conducted, I think it was nine interviews last week, and we were very pleased with the results of those interviews and hope to have those positions filled, and we have some very bright stars hopefully in our future. Other positive notes, reaching back to the holiday season, we had a Green Hills family who wishes to remain anonymous that really brightened some residents' Christmas. They passed along and essentially became a secret Santa, and the report that we sent to our secret Santa was that we went delivering today. First, we visited a family in the C-section that is in need of help, and we think the package we left from you will make their Christmas. And next, we stopped in the I-section to a foster family who has taken in four boys. The looks on their faces would have made you smile. So God bless you for your wonderful spirit of Christmas, and I constantly am amazed by the generosity of the residents in this community. They're just wonderful. On January 17, along with our fire department, we participated in a birthday parade. We've done a number of those for young children. This was for a gentleman that was 96 years young, a distinguished World War II veteran. The family wrote to us and said, "Thank you for celebrating our World War II veteran with a parade." PFC Bill Kurt celebrated by dancing at the doorway and talking about all the cars driving by. So it was our privilege, and we thank him for his service to our great nation. And we would remind anyone that is listening that if they have a child or an elderly family member who has been deprived of a party because of the pandemic, please give us a call, 513-825-2101. We'll be happy to do our part to brighten their days. In terms of statistics, during the month of December, we made two criminal arrests, including one for assault and one for failure to appear. We responded to 163 incidents, including an assault, seven domestics, five alarms, six lockouts, five parking complaints, 27 squad runs, a suicide attempt, and three thefts. We provided mutual aid to our surrounding agencies in 21 instances. We issued 26 traffic citations, nine warnings, and investigated three traffic crashes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Comments or questions? All right, and I have court receipts from the month of December. The ending bank balance was $8,282.04, and then checks to be issued. We'll be paying the state of Ohio out of the fees $491, $15 to the county, and the Village of Green Hills gets $2,770.10. And that's all I have.
Out of curiosity, how did we fare last year compared to previous years? I was just wondering how COVID affected things.
It's probably down, but I don't know. Our finance person might-
They are down, but yeah, I can certainly look at all of the numbers, and we can see how much, but it was, yes, it was down considerably.
Thank you.
It's not that people aren't speeding.
Yes, it is.
It's just everyone seems to be doing it in places. All right, committee reports, recreation cable TV, Natasha Metz?
We had to reschedule our meeting from yesterday due to a family illness in my family, so we will set a new date and get things going.
All right. Inner Governmental Affairs, laws and rules, Maria Walter?
We canceled our meeting for lack of agenda, but now we have the progress of what we needed to start with in the new year. And with the permission of my co-chair, Mrs. Hermes, I would like to have the meeting on the 9th of February, which is our work session, if that's okay with you.
That works.
That works. Okay, so that's, mine is at 6 o'clock. I don't know if you want to put yours off the safety or not.
I will probably ask the chief how he feels about the 9th, or if he would prefer the 23rd, if that's available for you. I know he doesn't have to stay on work session night, so trying to tie it into a date that he has to stay late. Anyway, it might be a little bit more convenient for my committee.
Okay, what is the date you are suggesting?
The 23rd, which would be the-
23rd, okay. That's fine with me.
Okay.
5:30 and 6?
Yes. I'm sorry?
Anything else?
No, that's it. We're leaving the rooms of council.
Okay. All right, services and streets, Jennifer Osmanaglu?
I just wanted to mention, I had an opportunity this week to speak with quite a few residents informally, and a lot of them had concerns about people being responsible for their property, or people, and a lot of it had to do with garbage. So especially as it is garbage night tonight, if everyone would just take a little time to make sure that all your garbage has been picked up, and to kind of look around and just straighten up things. I mean, you know, it's nice that if everyone took the cares to make their yards look nice, and everyone was, you know, I see so many really great land, like I walk around the neighborhood all the time, and I see so many people just really take the time and care to make their yards look nice and to make sure there's no garbage or anything lying around. And if we all did that, Green Hills would be that much cleaner and that much nicer. So I think, I'll just put a, you know, an admonishment, not admonishment, but-
PSA.
A suggestion that, you know, let's all just try to be a little more aware of what's going on in your yard. And I know with the winter, it's tough because nobody's hanging out in their yard. So, but just, you know, especially tomorrow morning, if garbage has gotten, you know, thrown out of your can, or an animal has gotten in there or something, just take a minute to pick it up and, you know, let's all have a cleaner neighborhood. So, thank you.
Jennifer, I have a couple of comments on that.
Yes.
I have been hearing and personally experienced, not every pet owner picks up after the pets.
Oh, yeah.
I have heard lots of comments in my neighborhood about that, and it's kind of frustrating for them because they don't realize what it is, and they start working in the garden or something like that, and there is waste there.
Oh, I've gone out and mowed the grass a few times, and yeah.
Okay, so, okay, the second thing that, as much as I love the stop sign, when people do stop, about 60% of the time is to throw garbage.
Wow.
Like bags of McDonald's and cans and things like that. The other 40%, they just don't stop. So that's another amount of the garbage that appears sometimes on those areas isolated because they're in bags. It's not that fell off from the garbage.
Right.
They were thrown out by people that passed by.
That's awful.
So that's another point that I want to bring up, because sometimes you would think that it was them or didn't pick it up or something. I know, it appeared suddenly. That person comes home, like I do, then I said, oh, hey, here it comes again. McDonald's, you know, wrappers, I mean, sometimes they're not even in a bag. They're wrappers and the coffee cups, I mean, they're tossed like here and there, everywhere. So I have to prepare gloves again because, you know, all of that. So it's, that's what many of our citizens are complaining about, the situation with the pets.
Yeah.
And the garbage that suddenly appears in their lungs, or the planting strip and things like that.
Yeah, so we'll definitely put that on our agenda for our next meeting, certainly.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
And to add on to that, first of all, most people that are watching this are probably not our trash.
Yeah.
So we thank everybody that does take care of the property. It's kind of overlapping a little bit in community.
Be here.
But one thing, I made a call about two weeks ago because I think that Rumkey was doing a speed test because trash was all, I went around the block, and I just saw trash in the road over multiple times. And when I came around to my house, I saw the reason. It was a speed thing where get it in the truck, and I actually made a call. It has to be pretty grievous, in my opinion, before a call, trying to give people the benefit of the doubt. So I would recommend that anybody that does notice a carelessness and just, you know, leaving trash when they put it in the trucks in the middle of the road, to call Rumkey and voice their opinion. They're very professional about it, and the whole goal is, I understand the need for speed, but also we have the need in our community to keep it nice.
Sure, yeah.
And you only have so many hands to pick it up while you're out jogging.
I've not let a two-bag jog, so it was a one-year term.
All right, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Now it's your turn, Jeff. Community development.
Carrying over. One question I had, and it's just about our retreat, and is that something we're gonna cover as far as the schedule? When will do that?
Sometime in March or April. Depends on the finance situation, and so we'll coordinate it. We can maybe talk a little more at the work session next week.
Great.
Be thinking of availability.
Possible, possible. And then we ended up canceling our meeting because of a health issue for one of our participants. So we'll be rescheduling, and then we'll let everybody know when that takes place, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Okay. All right, safety, Melanie Hermes?
We also rescheduled due to it being, the county being purple at the time and no agenda, but we will be meeting on Tuesday, February 23, at 5:30 in person.
All right, finance and audit, Tackley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The committee has not met since the first part of December when we discussed the permanent appropriations for 2021. And I assume that perhaps later this month or the first part of February, we'll see at least preliminary year-end results, but I think it's safe to say that while they may not have been an equal to 2019 results, 2020 didn't turn out nearly the disaster we first feared. So, you know, I cheer on our staff for their efforts in holding down cost and doing the good deeds. Keep up the good work.
All right. We have no unfinished business. New business, Resolution Number 2021-R01-F, Resolution Adopting the 2021 Green Hills Fee Schedule. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2021-01-F, Resolution Adopting the 2021 Green Hills Fee Schedule. Whereas the village has determined that it is necessary to assess fees for certain services, and whereas council updates the fee schedule annually, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, State of Ohio, that Section 1, the Council of the Village of Green Hills hereby adopts a fee schedule as set forth in Exhibit A attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, that this resolution shall be and is in effect from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
I just have a quick question. Under Commons, the electric, it says 10 hours electric for resident, non-resident, $100 hour rate for non-resident. Should the first non-resident not be there?
I know what that is. The electric rate is the first thing, the second 100, is just non-resident. We don't charge our residents an hourly rate.
So for a non-resident, they pay $110 if they get electric, or resident pays $10. If they don't get electric, resident pays nothing, non-resident pays $100.
Okay, I get it. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, to tack on to that, the resident would pay the $500 deposit, but no hourly, say they didn't even want electric, they don't even pay an hourly rate.
They would get the deposit back, whereas the non-resident pays the deposit, and then pays $100 per hour, and then they pay electric.
Correct.
If they have it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. It was kind of-
I still very much disagree with, so just making that known.
Okay.
Did we ever do analysis to see how many people, resident versus non-resident, have rented the commons in the past?
You know, I know we did. I'll have to dig that back out again. It's been a while.
Okay.
It was a very low number.
Yeah, I figured.
Okay, clerk of the roll?
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Nay.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Ms. Osmanaglu?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Resolution Number 2021-R01-F passes. Next, Resolution Number 2021-R02-F, Resolution Authorizing Increase for Salaried Employees. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2021-02-F, Resolution Authorizing Increases for Salaried Employees. Whereas the salaried employees are not part of the step schedules previously approved by the village council, now therefore be resolved by the Council of Village Green Hills, State of Ohio, that Section 1, salaried personnel, finance director, police chief, municipal manager shall receive a 2% increase in compensation annually retroactive to January 1, 2021. Said increases shall be contingent upon the economic health of the village and any further action that may be taken by council. Section 2, that this resolution shall be in effect immediately upon its adoption. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, something like this, I think I would have liked to see at a work session. I don't disagree with it. When we talk about an automatic indefinite cost of living raise, I don't, I've never really experienced that in the corporate world where-
Neither have I.
It's a given.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, who determines the economic health of the village? And again, it's not taking away from any of these very good contributors to the village. It's just, it seems like we should have discussed this prior to finding out three days ago, if I think it was-
I questioned that too, because I said, did I miss something? Did I just did not find it on the previous work session? And I went to the work session, I wasn't there. So I questioned that also.
Others, thoughts?
I think it's consistent with what we did last year for the same three people. So I don't have any problem with it at all.
Right. And I guess what I'm trying to understand, though, is if it's for efficiency sake, where we don't have to do this every year, is that the purpose, to make it automatic?
No.
Yes.
To some extent, though, because otherwise, I mean, every January, we're doing the same thing, because we weren't in the step schedule.
Right. And so I just look at it as a checks and balances kind of thing, and it gives us a chance to say, hey, on track, feeling good. At least it forces the conversation. It does say here that we- It does say here that we can speak up against it if we feel otherwise, but this is a moving train that will automatically happen. I know what it's like here business-wise, and that at least forces us to say, we're feeling good about this. Not so much just how your performance is rolling, because we have a vehicle to do that, but it's more or less, how do we feel we are doing performant, our, the whole economic health part of it? It's another thing to say, okay, yeah, I think we're doing okay, things are on track. So I just, it's the automatic nature. I think we are limited in scope and council and what we can do, because we can only put so much time in compared to those that are working full-time, and it's just a checks and balances thing, in my opinion.
I think you have to kind of balance that argument, Jeff, relative to the number of years where they received no increase at all, and that was rarely discussed as well.
Well, and I'm not, well, I thought the same thing. I thought, what if we feel because of that, and we're doing fine, that one year they should have more? I think that's as much on the table as we're really struggling, we can't afford it. Now that we're looking at doing autopilot, that is not even part of the consideration. I'm very aware of the freezes that have taken place, and by no means am I trying to take away from the parties involved at all. But also, we have to realize that over time, as this changes, and somebody else new comes on council, all this stuff will be happening. It's kind of like that thing you signed up for and forgot about, and it's taking a monthly fee out. At least there's this bringing it to your awareness, do I want to do this, are we doing the right thing, point of view, so. It's touchy, because I do not want to send the message in any way I'm disappointed in any of these three people.
I think you have, but that's-
Oh, that I just don't see automatic raise?
Pardon?
How's that saying I'm disappointed in them? By saying, I don't think that this structure is good for the village.
Although, aren't we doing the same structure for all the rest of the employees?
Well, and that's what I wanted to ask, and I didn't have a chance to dig into it, if that was an auto, and again, that's what I think a work session's for, not like we're laying it on the table and it's yea or nay, and we really don't get the dialogue about it. I think I would feel better to do a work session, a discussion, get facts on the table, and feel good about what I'm going to do or not do, if that makes sense.
I agree.
I agree with you, Jeff.
Okay, well, we have a motion on, so how do we handle this if we?
Well, right now, you've got a motion to adopt and a second, so that motion is on the table. Depending on the will of count, well, you can vote on that motion that's on the floor right now, although a motion to table is appropriate at any time, so if there were to be a motion to table, you could do that right now, even though there's a motion to adopt on the floor.
I would like to make a motion to table, but before I do that, I had considered, you know, doing that, making a motion to change the agenda on this earlier, but I wasn't going for shock and awe. That is not my intention at all. But I would like to make a motion to table this for a discussion at the work session.
Mr. Forbes, the reason that I seconded the motion was because I was instructed many years ago that otherwise there will not be a discussion. I have to be seconded in order to open it for a discussion. Otherwise, when it's on the floor, you can't discuss it by itself like that. So that's why I seconded and see what came up with a conversation afterwards.
Okay.
So I've made a motion to table it. If it's not seconded, we'll just proceed with the vote.
I second the motion to table if that's the case.
Okay. Clerk call the roll.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Osmanaglu?
This is voting on the tabling.
Yes.
Aye. Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
No.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, we'll discuss it in the work session in two weeks. All right. Next, resolution number 2021-R03-F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2021-03-F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Whereas the 2021 annual appropriations that were adopted on December 8th, 2020, are to be amended, and whereas appropriations must not exceed total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.36A5, therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the County Budget Commission. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of Village Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, since certain actions are needed in the monies appropriated so to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its financial obligations for the year 2020, the following items of expenditure are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year 2020. Fund description, Coronavirus Fund 2051, appropriation zero, change $18.28 for a total of $18.28. Fund description, Golf Fund 2908, appropriation zero, change $1,000 for a total of $1,000. Fund description, other capital projects, 4901, appropriation zero, change $22,379.35 for a total of $22,379.35. Fund description, accumulated sick leave, account number 2911, appropriation zero, change is $1,677.18 for a total of $1,677.18. Section 2, that the following transfers of funds be made from previously appropriated monies. From General Fund 1,000 to Police, account number 2901, the amount $299,000. From General Fund 1,000 to Swimming Pool, account 2909, amount $89,000. From General Fund 1,000, Non-Voted Debt Service, account 3901, $150,000. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded, comments or questions?
In Section 1, should it have said for the fiscal year 2021? Or is this for something for last year's?
I'm sorry.
Should it say 2021 for the fiscal obligations here? I just want to make sure.
No, I think this is for-
For last year's?
Figuring out the last.
It's for this year.
No, it's the-
It's for this year.
It's the, when they were adopted in 2020, December 8th?
Okay.
Is that what you're talking about, the first?
Yes.
Sentence? No, that's correct.
And then here. I said, under Section 1, and now therefore be it resolved? So it is for the fiscal obligations of 2020?
See where she's talking.
Fiscal obligations for the year 20-
21, I think.
Yes, yes. And that was, that was changed in the original, it was just missed in the typing.
Okay, just checking.
Yes, it's supposed to be 2021.
Sharp eye there. All right, is that it? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Ms. Osmanaglu? Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2021-R03-F passes. Next, we have a motion to reappoint board and commission members. Maria Walter, you're going to make that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion here to reappoint the board and commission members, and these are all reappointments for 2021. For the Planning Commission, Bud Walterman through 2026. For the Boards of Zoning Appeals, Oscar Huffman through 2023. Recreation Commission, Sean Patterson through 2023. And I would like very much to adopt this motion, please.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay. And do we need a roll call, or just? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all right. We want to make any meeting schedules, so we've got a work session on September 88th.
Rules and laws on February 23rd?
Monday. I think we should talk.
Safety also on Tuesday, February 23rd at 5:30.
Is that it? All right, meeting adjourned.
My Monday's event-
Was it entertaining enough? Okay.